Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Division and Mission Statement of the Austintown Schools. The Austintown Local School District is a united community with a proud legacy and a progressive approach to education. We provide an inspiring education that strengthens and prepares our students for unlimited future opportunities.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Recently, a few of our eighth graders here at AMS participated in the Patriots Pen Contest. It is an opportunity for them to win a scholarship, and it's sponsored by the VFW. Commander John Belint and Auxiliary President Nicole Morrison is here tonight from our Austintown VFW to recognize our students for their participation. They would also like to recognize a teacher for his continued support of this essay contest. At this time, I would like to turn it over to Commander John Belint and Auxiliary President Nicole Morrison.
Good evening. I normally don't like to read, but just to get a little information on the Patriots Award. It's VFW-sponsored nationwide, and it's a youth essay competition. And first prize, if it goes to national, is $5,000 and a all-expense-paid trip to Washington, DC for the winner and parent or guardian. First prize is, there's actually 53 prizes. They start out at 5,000, and the first 12 prizes, actually 13 through 23, they go from 5,000 all the way down to $1,000. And then again, from 26 to 53rd, there's $500 prizes. So there's quite a bit of money involved here. And I'd like to thank the students that did participate, showing that they still care for America, and they took the time to do these essays. They were all very good essays. They're competing against, like I said, the national. We as a post, we review the ones given from the high schools here, junior high, excuse me. Voice of Democracy for high school, that's up to $30,000 if people participate in that. But the Patriots Pen, we start out with the post, our Austintown post, we give it to district, and then from district, they go to state, and then from state to national. We had one member that went to district from this school. So that's quite an accomplishment. So to keep it short, we'll get into the presentations now. And thank you.
Gabrielle Cece. Erin Kuzinski. Erin. Saturn Galloway. Kennedy Rogers. Hunter Barnett.
This young man here is the one that went to district. So we're moving up a step, and every year we're going to get better, and we're going to move all the ways up. And they can participate until they get high school. Every year, you can try again, next year will get you all the way to state or better. So thank you.
The last one is from the auxiliary, Mr. Johnson.
Congratulations, Mr. Johnson. I'd like to say something about Mr. Johnson. He's the one that's probably made all of this possible. He interviews everybody, not interviews them, people come to him, they fill out their reports, you review them and go over everything. So this is the keynote here. This is the gentleman that gets everyone together on the same sheet of music. And I'd like to thank you again.
Once again, thank you, everybody, tonight. I'd like to be here. Thank you.
Onto item number five for department reports. Alexis Weber, our Food Service Director.
Maybe I shouldn't have done that. Good evening. Board, I did put an information sheet on there for you if you'd like to follow along. Some updates from the Food Service Department. We were very delighted to be awarded another National School Lunch Program Equipment Grant for this year. So the Austintown Intermediate School is receiving $25,000 to purchase a commercial steamer. You might ask, what do we use a commercial steamer for? Steamers are very important for quick cooking, to get lunch ready, things like that. So we use steamers to cook our vegetables and some of our main dishes. So we are going to be using that money to buy a new steamer. And then Fitch High School will also benefit from us receiving that grant. AIS will need to make room for the new steamer, and so there will be a stack of two convection ovens that will then replace two other ovens at Fitch. So Fitch needs more capacity, and we're just going to move that right along over there. AMS also received a grant this year. So if you noticed on the way in, there should be some signs hanging out front and on some of the doorways, that we got a breakfast expansion grant for $5,000 here at the middle school. And what that does is allow us to have some extra products and some extra equipment to serve breakfast longer, so not just until the first bell rings, but also throughout first period and up until right about 8:45. So thank you to Mrs. Vickers on working with me to get that situated, so it worked out for the middle school. We also are in the middle of a second phase of consideration for a School Nutrition Foundation Equipment Grant. So in January, I had submitted an application and a video highlighting a few reasons why Fitch High School needs new equipment. If you can imagine, a lot of equipment at Fitch High School is original, and we have knobs missing and this and that. So we got notified last week that we are in a second round, and we hope to hear from them with a new award status by next month. And I do have to thank Falcon Media, especially DC. He did a wonderful job of really creating sketches that were funny and different angles that really highlighted just how bad we need new equipment at Fitch, but also made it lighthearted. And so because the biggest part of that application was a video, we really need to thank Falcon Media for their quick and speedy effort to get that figured out for us. So thank you. A few other things to highlight on some partnerships we've done. So Food Services has really expanded some of our partnerships with the Athletic Department. This will conclude the third year that we have partnered with the Boosters for providing chocolate milk to the boys' basketball team. That's something that they had initiated with us a few years ago, and then, like I said, they've really enjoyed it. And so this will conclude our third year with them. And then, since the beginning of January, we have also worked with the football team to provide a recovery meal to them during their workouts. And I have worked with Mr. Parker, the new football coach, to really develop a plan for the teams to stay fueled throughout the summer during their practices. So they're going to try and eat breakfast and lunch in the summer food service program and kind of coordinate that with their timeframe for us. So we'd love to partner with them and look forward to working with them in the summer. So that brings me to the summer food service program. It might sound early, but there's a lot of work that has to get done to get the program up and running. But we will operate the summer food service program again here at the elementary school on campus. Our tentative dates right now are June 8th through August 21st, and we do anticipate to serve breakfast and lunch around the same time, so it's 7:45 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for lunch. And just a brief overview of the program, it's completely free when we do the summer food service program. It is for anyone ages 1 to 18, and they do not need to enroll or be enrolled in Austintown. It's an open site, and we certainly will still be here to support all of the things going on campus, like summer camps, different academic courses, summer events, and obviously the athletics. And then, we also met the District Wellness Committee to update the district wellness plan in mid-November. So I do have to just let you know that there were some updates made, just some minor updates made to the wellness plan, and that updated wellness plan is on our district website under the Food Service Department. And I do want to just say one last thanks to Mr. Boston and his maintenance staff. They've just done an excellent job taking care of our kitchens. Even though we have some newer equipment and we have some older equipment, they don't hesitate to come back and, or I'm sorry, to really respond to everything that we ask of them to get things fixed, up and running, so that meal service is smooth. So I really have to thank Mr. Boston for that, too. Thank you.
Item six, building reports, starting with Fitch High School.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Board. I'd like to welcome all our Austintown students, especially our best, the Fitch High students that are here in attendance. At start, I would like to say that at Fitch, we're very proud that we just received an Air Force ROTC program that will be coming to Fitch next year. We will be the only school in the tri-county area that has an Air Force ROTC program. On February 8th, members of our Austintown-Fitch band competed at the OMEA District Solo Ensemble Competition held at Warren G. Harding High School. There were 22 soloists entered, 16 received a Superior One rating, five received Excellent, and one received Good rating. In addition, there were 17 ensembles entered, 11 received Superior, and six received Excellent ratings. So we're very proud of that. Our Fitch Students Serving Veterans Club hosted a spaghetti dinner February 5th to close to almost 80 veterans. The Fitch Choir also performed patriotic songs and personally thanked each and every veteran for their service. We'd like to congratulate our Austintown-Fitch cadets. They will travel to state in Columbus at the end of this month to perform their jazz, palm, and hip-hop routines. This Friday, we will have our Winter Spirit Week, where we'll have our pep rally next week also. All juniors will take the ACT test. And lastly, it's a great honor. I would like to introduce to you a special guest, Coach Terry Dutton, with some special awards. So please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Keltie. Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to introduce a couple coaches that I brought with me. Lauren Woolley, who is my assistant coach, and Joe Curry, who is one of the division coaches. At the NSDA District Tournament held on February 14th and 15th at Holland High School, we finished first in overall sweepstakes. So the kids were really excited about that. The team also earned for national recognition for a Leading Chapter Award, which is this award, which is, I think the statistic they gave was less than 3% of the nation received this award. This award is from degrees that were earned during 2009 to 2019. So Andrea Reed was the head coach at that time, so I want to make sure that she deserves, that she gets the recognition. She deserves her this one. The team also won the Cumulative Sweepstakes Award. And so we had a really successful competition. But more importantly, we have some national qualifiers. The first one I'd like to introduce is Cecilia Sagraterio. She qualified to Nationals in Dramatic and Terp. Carissa Hartley qualified to Nationals in Lincoln-Douglas Debate. We have two other qualifiers that were unable to make it this evening. Armin Javanon is district champion and national qualifier in International Extamp, and Joanna Blystone is district champion and four-time national qualifier, which is amazing. There'll be like, I don't know, maybe 20 people on the stage with her at Nationals, accepting national recognition for qualifying all four years of high school. She also, we just received yesterday notification that she has been selected as an Academic All-American. So that's kind of a big deal, too. So I want to really, I really wish she was here, but congratulations to her. And finally, state is going to be held in Austintown next year for the first time since 1995. So we're really proud of that. There was an eight-page application process and some really strange questions asked by the state committee. But they have chosen us. They feel that we have those facilities and we have the people to do a good job, so that's what we intend to do. And thank you very much.
Hello again. I want to tell you about some of the great things we have going on at AMS right now. So first, I'd like to thank our PTA for putting on our annual talent show. We had 20 fantastic acts that performed, and they also did three mini-shows for our students during the day. So that was a huge thanks to the PTA for doing that. I'd like to congratulate our eighth-grade Red Boys Basketball Team and our seventh-grade Boys Blue Basketball Teams. They had great seasons, and they made it all the way to the AAC Championship Games. So they did an awesome job. And speaking of awesome jobs, we had our second quarter awards assembly last week. We gave out a total of 694 certificates, and that was for academics in attendance. So congratulations to our students for that. And finally, on February 13th, 14 of our eighth graders competed at Math Counts at YU. Two of our students, John Darnley and Jared, Javanon, have actually qualified to go to state competition in Columbus. March 7th, couldn't be prouder, so I want to wish them the best of luck. And that is what's going on at AMS right now.
Good evening. It's a pretty good feeling, 6 o'clock and the sun's still out. That's a good sign, spring's coming, so it's pretty exciting. The fifth graders went on a field trip last week to the Dior Performing Arts Center to watch the Dance Theater of Harlem, it's a ballet where dancers showed various types of poses and moves. We even had a couple students go onstage. That was pretty cool. We have third and fourth graders going to the Gavelli Center next week to watch the Youngstom Phantoms face Chicago Steel. Hopefully, the Phantoms bring home a win. We had a book fair finishing up last week. The PTA did a tremendous job hosting that, and everything went smoothly. On February 26th, we have an art show that's going to be taking place at AIS. Ms. Houston and Mrs. Reppe have been working very hard to prepare the art show. It literally turns in like a mini butler. Each student has one piece of artwork that's matted and framed on display, and it takes place in the gym and cafeteria. It's pretty cool to see. We participated in the World Read Aloud Day. We had various guests throughout the day come in and read to the students. I think we had Pete the Penguin and the Chick-fil-A Cow stop by. The Chick-fil-A Cow had some treats for some of the students. The biggest hit of the day was Mr. Capazella. The students absolutely loved the book he read. It's kind of cool. We hosted last week Lunch of a Lifetime. It's an incentive program that we came up with to help kids, to help kids through, I don't know, get motivated, should you say. We randomly chose six students last week who bought yearbooks. We pulled out of a hat and we rolled out the red carpets, literally rolled out the red carpets, and we had velvet ropes, we had a little security guard, a violinist, and I served them like a hostess, like they were at a five-star restaurant. It was pretty special, and we're going to continue to do that throughout the year. We have a big shout-out to Brittany English, Deb Fuller, and Tammy Radar in the cross-cut unit. They do such an amazing job with their students. They teach them life skills through the Falcon Foods and popcorn sales. The best day of the week tomorrow, they're going to be popping popcorn, and when you walk into the building, it smells like you're at the movies. It's really cool. Shout-out to Officer Dave Potnicki. He does a great job with the Dare Program. The students absolutely love him. He is a magnet for high fives and hugs. He's such a positive role model, and we are very fortunate to have him. Happy spring, everyone.
Mr. Papagallo, what was the name of the book that he read?
He could summarize it after there. Something about Walter.
I just wanted to know, I just wanted people to know why I was crying, that's all.
Good evening, everyone. We are getting ready for, don't let this make you feel old, the Class of 2033, as we prepare for our kindergarten kickoff and registration. Ms. Morell, Mrs. Mills, and myself will be going on tour here soon. We'll be touring our local preschools and talking about kindergarten readiness. So tomorrow night, we start at Zion Early Center. I also brought some flyers, in case anyone has any little ones that would like to sign up. Some donations we've received recently. Ms. Keenan and our cross-categorical classroom received nearly $1,000 from the Austintown-Fitch Class of 76 and Friends. Ms. Fay received a donation for her lighthouse from the seniors at Fitch. They will be receiving a wall-mounted play system in their sensory room. I worked with Ms. Weber to bring nutrition education into the classroom. We're going to do that through the Ohio State Extension. That'll come into our classrooms of kindergarten and second grade, as well as a parent piece. And now for your daily dose of cuteness. I brought our amazing robotics kids, so come on up. We have Ellie Payne from the Enchanted Butterflies, Brooklyn Moran and Adam Wentz from the Superhero Builders, and Asher and Bella Hamilton from Build It. Along with our coaches, we can't forget how amazing they are, Taylor Payne, Allison Moran, and Lisa Hamilton. And what they did was kindergarten and first grade learned how to follow directions and do basic builds, and our second graders used technology to build and make their own lever that moved with a computer. They are amazing. Thank you.
Okay, for item number seven, nobody has signed up for the public comment section on the agenda.
And Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to add item number 24 to the agenda.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek? Item eight, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the agenda for the February 19th, 2020 Board of Education Regular February Session. Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek? Item nine, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the following items A through F by consent action. Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 10, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the service agreement by and between the School District and Julian and Grube Incorporated for the fiscal year 2020-21 Medicaid School Program Proposal effective July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek? 11, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the contractual agreement by and between the Austintown Local School District and Supplemental Educational Services Incorporated for Title I Services at All Children Learn Differently, effective July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $2,332.75. Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
12, upon the recommendation of the Treasurer, approve the contractual agreement by and between the Austintown Local School District and Supplemental Educational Services Incorporated for the Title I Services at St. Christine's School, effective July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $4,395.81. Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek? 13, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the following personnel items A through C by consent action. Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
14, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approve the facilitated resolution by and between the Austintown Local School District- by and between the Austintown Local School District and the complainant that the district will complete Phase 1 as defined in the district's proposal dated February 5th, 2020, pending board approval and weather permitting by the start of the 2020 softball season, and Phase 2 completed by the 2022 home season, providing weather is favorable to complete construction.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item 15, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Austintown Local School District and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees Local 194, whereas the current collective bargaining agreement does not include medical assistance in Article 1, and whereas the parties, through mutual agreement, desire to recognize the medical assistant position as a classification of OPC Local 194 with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities granted herein.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 16, approve, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the Austintown Local School District and Stark State College to participate in the College Credit Plus program to provide high school students the opportunity to be enrolled in a college-level course or series of courses taught by Stark State College. This agreement is in effect for the 2020-21 academic year.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 17, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the academic experience agreement by and between the Austintown Local School District and Kent State University to provide academic experience opportunities to KSU Community Health Nursing students at Austintown Schools.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 18, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the agreement entered into by and between the Austintown Local School District and Access for Internet Access Services for fiscal year 2021.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Item 19, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the agreement entered into by and between, do we just do this? The Austintown Local School District and Access for Application Services for fiscal year 2021, Contract 2021-A-001.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 20, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the Community Interpreting Services Contract by and between the Austintown Local Schools and Easter Seals of Mahoning, Trumbull, and Columbiana Counties for contracting interpreting services as needed in the district effective February 11th, 2020 to December 31st, 2020.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item 21, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the memorandum of agreement by and between the Austintown Local Schools and the United States Air Force to establish and operate an Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Unit effective July 1st, 2020.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Item 22, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the solicitation for bids regarding dairy products, bakery goods, and pizza for the children nutrition programs for the 2020-21 school year. Bids to be available to suppliers in March of 2020 and awards to be determined in April
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Motion for the next board meeting to be Wednesday, March 18th.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Item 24 is the addendum. Motion to approve the Austintown Local School District calendar for the 2020-21 school year as presented.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood. Just a quick announcement. We have, we're so excited about the junior ROTC. So thanks to the principals at the high school for making that happen. We have sign language coming to the high school next year, drone classes. So we're making some changes and some great improvements to the class selections with also electives happening there. So we're going to keep it going all through the system, updating some of the things we need updated and making it really exciting for kids to be here.
Mrs. Kropaski?
Yes.
Mrs. Smrek?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Sherwood?
Yes.
In association with Austintown Local Schools and Austintown Township.